Okay, now we're at the point where we would like to open the meeting for general discussion of the bond resolution. And in order to do that, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the bond resolution presented under item one. If I could have a motion for that. Lou Steinbrecher? And a second? Lisa Mazzella? Okay. On this, we don't have to take a vote. We can now call for the discussion. And we are going to ask, because as you can tell, this is being videotaped. And that's being done so that we can share this between now and the referendum next week. We would hope to get this video on YouTube and possibly on the public access TV by the middle of this week if all goes well. And so therefore, the people who are unable to be here tonight would be able to be brought up to speed on everything that's going on. So we are asking a couple of things. One is that you come up to one of the two microphones. There's one on this side and one on that side in order to either ask your question or give a comment. And then also, if initially, people would please limit their comments to three minutes so that everyone will have a chance. And then if we still have time and everything's going smoothly, you could come up again. So I'd like to open the meeting to discussion because we've taken that step. And feel free to come up to the mic.
My name is Sandra Bernard, and I am a resident of North Stonington. I am against this modernization as proposed for various reasons. Because I have a three-minute limit, I will say the most important ones to me at this time. I am not feeling, having a good feeling on the discussions about sending our students to another school. I've heard several different things said. One of the things is that another school, we would not have oversight of the curriculums, et cetera. We would have oversight. We would have a contract. We would get what the contract gives us. I would like to see that opened again if this resolution does not go through. There is precedence for this. We already send some of our students out of school to other schools, including Stonington. There are 19 district schools, that combined schools in this state. And my last statement is, if the yes votes are a majority, the people have spoken. If the no vote is a majority, stop coming back with another vote for the same basic plan and cost. Revisit options available with accurate cost analysis without pushing an agenda. Provide the information to the taxpayers for a written vote on options. Do not take a vote at a town meeting and go with that. We all need to have an input if this doesn't go through this time. We need to do something with the schools, but most of us have to be together. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Bruce Smith. I live on Meadowood Drive. Lived there for 35 years now. Had two children go through this system. I don't speak in favor of this tonight. And some of it has to do with what she said. There certainly are four schools that students could take a choice of and go to, whether it's for a Voag program, to Ledger, to Stonington if they wanted to play football, to Griswold, or NFA. And they would get a richer experience. My daughter, who graduated from Wheeler, always tells me that she wishes she was in a larger student body. There would be more opportunity and just a broader experience. I've also noticed in my time in the town that whenever there's been an opportunity to build the tax base, they fight it. Whether it's Six Flags, whether it's anything that wants to come in and provide a tax base other than the lone homeowner. They don't want it. And then they come out and they say, "We're going to spend $38 million on something like this." At this time, it's not just businesses leaving Connecticut. People are fleeing Connecticut. And after two terms of Dan Malloy, you may not get any money from them. They're going broke up there. So to pin our hopes on reimbursement, even though it's written in that there's safeguards for that, I just think it's irresponsible. The kids would get a better education, because I'm very pro-education, but I do not see this as a responsible thing to do under the circumstances. Because we're maintaining physical plants and administrative staff and everything else that other schools already have. And we would simply be paying tuition. And I think that they would get as good an experience. And I don't know, to me, it would be like $600 or $700 would be an average increase. And that's a big increase in a yearly tax rule. So I just think it could be done. I think the other schools, it makes much more sense at this point, because I don't think that the student body's going to be increasing as we go. And if we have to improve the elementary school and the junior high, then go for it. I mean, we may have to do that. I just don't think that this is the way to do it, and I thought I would mention that. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrew?
Hi, my name is Andrew Carlson, and I'm a junior at Wheeler High School. And I would like to speak a little bit about the education at Wheeler from a high school student's perspective. Oftentimes, we see Wheeler get categorized as small. And that, for most people, is then equated to not having a lot of potential. Well, I like to argue the exact opposite. When I go to school, most of my class sizes have about 10 to 12 kids. And you know what? I learn so well in those settings. I get personal attention from all my teachers. All my teachers know me by name. They know my strengths, my weaknesses. And you know what? When you go to a lot of these other schools, you're simply a student ID number and maybe a last name at most. I like being known for who I am at Wheeler. I like the fact that my teachers know my strengths and weaknesses, because then they can teach me to the best that they can, and so that way I can learn to my greatest potential. Now, when speaking to a lot of the opportunities, some might also begin and just assume that just because a bigger school has more clubs, it means that's better for a student. Well, not exactly. When you look at Wheeler's opportunities, they're all extremely developed. When Wheeler decided they wanted to start a math team, we didn't just start a math team. We ended up being one of the most highly competitive teams in the state. When Wheeler wanted to make a science bowl team, we were also one of the highest competitive teams in the tri-state area. When Wheeler High School decided to make a debate team, we sent a team to the state finals. When Wheeler High School wanted to make a declamation club, we had a student going on to the regional poetry allowed competition. What other high school can say this? It's not about the amount of classes, the amount of opportunities you have on a sheet of paper. It's what you do with them. And at Wheeler High School, we take it to the best of our abilities. And I really hope that people really see this through the referendum, because there's so much hard work going on over there. And it really would be a shame to see it all go to nothing. Thank you.
Bing?
Good evening. My name is Bing Barlik. I live on 379 Yossip Road. And I really hope this is the last time I ever have to say anything about the school. Sending our kids out of town sends an awful message. And there's been tons of research on it. It's really not going to save any money, and it may cost more money. We're not going to do better than this. We've worked on it 12 years, over and over and over again, trying to fine-tune it, trying to save money. We are not going to do better than this. It is not going to go away. It's simply about safety. It's about legal compliance. And it's about giving our students the education that they deserve. It's about real estate values. It's about human values. Our children are deserving of the best. Please, North Stonington, do not be a town without pity. Thank you.
I live at 37 Stillman Road. I want to address the one line in the, "Our community would not have oversight of our students or the curriculum, nor control over rising tuition costs." Voice and vote is priceless, ladies and gentlemen. Priceless. I've been teaching school for 48 years. When we don't have, when our children are sent away, we lose that oversight. We are now outsourcing the prison system. You go to the sub-base, there's private contractors that have security. Charter schools are private. We're losing our voice and vote on a lot of things that are going on in our country. But the most important voice and vote is in our own community for our own children. My two children went through this system. We're not here for entertainment. You want to play football, this, we're here to educate. And we got a mentality in our state about entertainment. UConn doesn't even own its logo anymore. I could go on and on and on. We're about education, not entertainment. Thank you.
Jim?
Jim Patton, I live at 11 Babcock Road. You know, if we were talking about an ordinary school, this would be a different conversation going on, but Wheeler is an extraordinary school. 92% of graduates go on to higher education. SATs have been as much as 160 points higher than other towns. The state of Connecticut just did a multi, about 12 different metrics of the high schools in the area, of the 10 or 12 high schools in the area. Wheeler came out number one, well ahead of NFA, well ahead of Stonington, Ledger, the whole crowd. There is something to be very proud about, and we ought not to dismiss it out of hand for Starbucks coffee a day sort of approach. Thank you very much.
My name's Al Bernard. I live at 450 B Knollwich Wesley Road. I'd like to thank Andrew for his analysis. However, while he feels strongly about keeping everything in this town, I don't. And I'll use his next-door neighbor as an example. His next-door neighbor, his father is on, her father is on the Board of Education. He sends his student to Stonington, and that must be a good reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Feel free to come up to either mic, and if you want to stand and wait there, whatever you'd like, so that we can move it along. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Linda Smith from Kingswood. And I just want to say, I believe this is the third vote for the town in regards to additions and renovations for the school.
If you move closer to the, if you move closer to the mic, then you'll have--
I believe this will be the third vote for the town in regards to additions, renovations for the school system. If the referendum next Monday is no, I suggest that the next vote should be, do we want to continue to have high school? Or do we want to offer our students an opportunity for a more diversified selection of courses that a larger school would give them?
Thank you. Thank you. Brian?
Well, I'm not in support of this. I think it's a great idea, but I've been told that North Stonington has more senior citizens coming into it. Now, senior citizens got no raises here. Federal government said there was no cost of living. But I wonder how many people out there got raises, that are working, they get raises. I'm on a fixed income. It's going to take more money out of my pocket. I think we were a little bit short-changed, because we weren't given the opportunity to see what other opportunities are out there. It's going to come down to a black and white. Each and every one of us is going to have to look at our pockets and see if we could afford something like this. And I think that's what's going to determine whether it's yes or no. The mill rate's going to go up, but nobody talks about the tax base going up. How many years people want to have businesses in here? It's been said already. Businesses want to come in? You think they're going to come in if we raise the mill rate almost five mils? By the time it's all said and done, with the EMS building? We're going to have to put fire trucks? You know, and what else comes on down the road to us? This is just the bare essentials that's showing us right now. There was nothing said about the high school. I understand it's going to be reverted back to the town. There's going to be an expense there for us. I don't know how much that'll be, but there'll be an expense. It should be included, all in this package. I do have a question also. On the way this is written up, I'm not a lawyer or anything, but I also graduated from Wheeler, and I can think. At the end of it, it says, where should I start? Right here. Toward the end, after this, it says, "The Stonington Board of Education Central Office" is, "And authorize the issue of bonds and notes to finance the portion of such appropriation not defrayed from grants." Does that mean if we don't get any grants, we're going to finance that whole 38.38550? Or is it going to go?
Let me ask Selectman Murphy to speak to that.
If you look at the entire resolution that you're voting on, there is a stipulation that says if we do not get 46.07% of the eligible reimbursement, we don't proceed with the town. This ballot question is abbreviated or synopsis of what you're voting on. The entire resolution is four pages long. It has all the stipulations that are in there, the requirements of reference to state statutes, the requirements of the selectmen, of the treasurer, and so forth. You're not, you do not, you're correct in saying you do not have the entire resolution, four-page resolution, when you go to the ballot box. What you have is the abbreviated resolution. You're saying, "We will, we support or not the 38.55 million dollars project." So, no, it does not have, you know, that statement at the end is saying that it gives us authorization to borrow the amount of money that is not covered by grants. So we can't borrow more than that 23 or 21 million, or whatever that number is.
So if we borrow the 23 million, and we've got a project up here for 38 million, we're a little short.
We don't move forward on the project if we do not receive 46.07% reimbursement from the state. Period.
So the 23 million, we're not going to bond out for that either?
Correct. We don't. As you notice, there's a stipulation that was actually added at the request of the Board of Finance, and I do concur with that, having that stipulation in there. It should give you or anyone else the comfort in knowing that we're not going to spend more of the town's money than the 23 million dollars that's indicated on there. The other stipulation that's in the resolution does allow us to spend, I don't have the number in front of me, I think it's 1.59 million dollars, to develop the project. Because it takes a year to get a firm commitment back from the state, we do want to have money to begin developing the project. If we did not do that, if we waited the whole year and waited till it came back, we would be subject to the escalation cost of the project that would exceed that 1.59 million. So it's really to our benefit to move forward with the project and have it developed, awaiting the firm letter from the State Board of Education.
I'd like to say a few other things on this. We have, we have, let's see, where was I here? Okay. You have the waiver, you're saying there's, might be a waiver for the class sizes. I thought, I thought in this, in this project, the class sizes were already, went down in So why would they give us a waiver for a smaller size if we're already down?
The space standard that the state has is basically a number of, for so many students, you're allowed so many square feet. When it comes to a smaller school, it is extremely hard to meet that full reimbursement, because you still need spaces for your computer lab, science, gym, everything else. You still need all that. So they typically afford smaller towns, in our situation, a waiver from that per pupil square footage. And typically, if small schools are approved for that, notice we are citing both numbers in there, it's unlikely, although it's unlikely that we won't be approved for that, we are taking that into consideration, it may not happen. And that's why you have the difference of the 23 million and the 21 million. So the standard is to allow us additional square footage because we are small, you know, additional square footage per pupil because we are small and we're still required to have those programs.
Well, I'm looking at it this way. The United States government, our own government's in trouble. We all know that the state of our state's really in trouble. I don't want to see us, I know we don't have any debt right now, or very little for our town. I hate to see us take our credit card, put it up the hill, and follow the governments down the tubes, and we just become another statistic. Because if we can't afford it, if we can't afford it, we're not going to make it. And I'd like to see some options. I think there's options for, more options for students. There's more options for our town, and I'd like to see them put out, not just be able to vote on this, which is, I appreciate what the committee has done, but I think most people want to see the options. I want the best for our students too. And it might not be popular, but it might be that we would have to send them out. And if that's the option, that's going to save our town, because we've got a lot of other things coming in in this town already. They're coming up.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah.
Nita? Nita, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was turned the wrong way. Of course, go ahead.
Mike, do you, my name is Mike Hayes, Princess Lane. Mike, do you have more of a breakdown of the cost estimates in terms of, you know, kitchen facility, equipment, renovation, hazardous removal? And also, in what year? And how those estimates were developed? Is that something you can share with us now, or should I meet with you offline?
Well, it's all public information, so happy to share it with anybody that would want it. We do have more detailed breakdowns of the cost. So we have cost breakdowns as it relates to the specific things, such as like the centralized kitchen. And we also have a cash flow statement, which tells us when we're going to expend what costs, like in what year. And we know how much we're going to need to borrow in the short term. So we do have all of that information. I could try to answer specific questions for you now, or I'm happy to meet with you afterwards to address those.
I think it's best to take it offline.
Okay.
But you do have such information.
We do, and actually, the Board of Finance requested one of those documents, so it's, they have that as well. So we could talk offline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Shaun, the resolution, as I read it, and as we are going to be asked to vote on, does not include the clause that you were mentioning. In other words, it's not the entire written document that is before us.
You're correct. It's not the four-page entire resolution that has all the particulars of financing and so forth. It has been, those stipulations, if I could call them stipulations, have been included in the Board of Finance resolution that they approved. And it has been included in the Board of Selectmen resolution that we approved. But no, the town is not voting on the entire four-pages resolution that includes those. But the selectmen are basically bypassing of our resolutions. We are directed to not spend the money unless the state money is reimbursed at that percentage.
Thank you. Mike, your estimate of the piecemeal approach is greater than the project as proposed?
That is correct. I think it's about $4 million more.
Again, is there a specific method of estimate and a year of those dollars such that I can understand why piecemeal is greater than the project when most of, if not all of, the items on the piecemeal list are included in the project?
Yes. I can, I'll tell you a little bit, and then if this doesn't answer it, I'll have our architect, Rusty Malik, who is here and has put in a great deal of work on this project, further explain. Part of the problem is, we have to look at this as, if you piecemeal this, it's not going to happen all in the same year. In other words, we wouldn't do all these things at once. Otherwise, again, we're proposing a project. That's why we're proposing it that way. So because of the fact that these come in at different times, it assumes phased renovations in multiple small projects, as it says at the bottom there, and encompassing summers. And the other part is, a lot of this isn't eligible for reimbursement. Or if it's eligible for any reimbursement, it's at a lower rate. So that's, in other words, we're doing the project, this is part of the rationale that the committee had, is doing the project, we get a much higher rate of reimbursement to do these things. So, and we get a much greater product. We get state-of-the-art facilities, rather than just kind of hitting these little things that really don't have an educational benefit, with the exception of the science labs. But if, does that answer your question, or would you like further explanation?
No, but again, offline, I may be able to obtain the additional information I'm looking at. For Mike, have you considered the possibility of not futzing with what we have? But rather, finding a new location in town and building new schools? Because essentially, your plan, through a process of renovation, add-on, and demolition, is essentially that, but you're staying in the same place.
Well, we looked at, we are basically building a new middle high school, and we have the benefit of having a gym there, so it saves us money. If you were to, if you were to weigh, looking at a new middle high school with a gym and all that-- all that, yes, we've looked at that, that costs more. If you were to look at, if you were to look at a new elementary school, and that, that actually costs more, we've, we've looked at that, it's quite, quite a bit more, actually. The reason the committee, just as the prior committee looked at this whole renovate as new, and also the alterations project, which is what we're doing at the middle high school, is because it gives us the highest level of reimbursement. When you do a new school project, our reimbursement rate is, what is it? Ten, 10% less. 10% less to do a new project.
Okay, so the, the renovation approach yields you a greater return, 40-something possible percent?
46.07% on eligible costs.
Versus 10 on a whole new construction.
10% less, so it's about 36%. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the reason. And believe me when I tell you, we looked at a lot of different options, and the committee before us looked at more, but the one you're seeing here is the one that we ultimately settled on after going to many, many a meeting, which a lot of people were at, and we talked about different things, and everybody, you know, our committee unanimously voted on it, but, you know, we looked at a lot of different options there.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
My name is Gary Thompson, I'm a resident of Stonington. First off, the 38 million is grossly inaccurate, because we can't even build a firehouse without 50% cost overruns, and we haven't got a foundation in. So I know enough about construction, that's inaccurate. You will see cost overruns, no municipality has built anything without it in the state of Connecticut. Second off, you talk about reimbursements, that's the state reimbursing the town. We, as a taxpayer in the state of Connecticut, have to pay that. So really, we pay the full amount. Second off, I have not seen any hard numbers. I've been trying to pay attention to this, but like most everybody here, I work two jobs to pay my bills. I would like to see actual hard numbers on what it would cost to send our high school out. Yes, my kids graduated from Wheeler, it's been great, both of my kids said they wish they had gone to a bigger school. I do know that we're paying about 14,500 per student a year, according to the state website. Amortize the 38 million over 20 years, you're about 15,500. So none of these have been really brought up. If we're going to pay 15,000 a year per student, what's it going to cost us to send a high school out? Before you ask us to vote on all this, it seems to me that this keeps coming up, more and more, more and more, you're wearing the town down, hopefully you'll get us to vote it in, just like we did with the firehouse. Give us the real numbers, and I would like to say, if we're going to have a referendum next week, why don't we also have on the ballot, if it's a no, it's done for 10 years, we don't bring it up. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just checking, just, excuse me, I'm just checking to see if anybody wants to address the comment about the 38 million not having any overrun in it?
He had a question, actually.
Okay, okay.
The ques, I just, the one question that you did ask was about doing a study on what it would cost, and the last committee did do a study to see what it would cost to send kids out of district, and it was not advantageous for us to do that. Again, we're culminating in 12 years' worth of work here, and so we've kind of picked up and feel pretty good about things. As far as the cost overruns, we actually have about $2 million in reserve for cost overruns in this project, so we have reserves in this. Our numbers are new. You know, I, I was not on the EMS committee, so I don't feel qualified to answer any questions about it, but I did watch their presentations and attend town meetings, and I know that they had a situation where they got their numbers by the time they came forward, the numbers were old, and they also had a terrible situation where the economy kind of flipped on them. So it was kind of a double whammy for them. We've stayed current with our numbers, we have reserves in place for these numbers, we feel very strongly that these are good numbers, and our architect here in the front row has backed them up every single time and continues to take a good look at them. So that's just answering the one question that he had.
Brad?
Yes, Brad Borden, Swan Town Hill. I'd like to hear from the Board of Finance to comment on this loan amortization schedule that shows a 26, particularly page three, which shows a 26% tax increase, including not, not just the school, but everything else that's coming up.
Yes, is, yes. Is there someone from the Board of Finance who would be able to speak to the amortization schedule? I see Tim Main coming up. Great.
Hi, I'm Tim Main, the chairman of the Board of Finance. Just a little to go over what we're looking at here. There's four sheets that you have that our vice chairman put together for us. So the first sheet is looking at a 4% interest, that would not be with the USDA, which we don't have yet, so we're only going on the current number. We did put the USDA, if we did get it, would be the second sheet. So the second sheet would be the 2.875 interest, if you're looking at it, two payments annually on both of those. The third sheet is kind of a synopsis of where we're going with the budget. We had the reevaluation, the fixed grant list 2015, so we're looking at 27.07 would be our mils. The ESC-approved loan, that's the firehouse project, that would be .81 mils. The loss of the education funding, that's just the nearest estimate right now, and the state's back and forth with numbers on that, so, like we said, that's with no further increase or loss in state funding there. Increase to the, the next line would be, the Board of Ed budget is .5 mil, and increase to the Board of Selectmen is .25. So the, the numbers that we're looking at here are for the 4% interest, is where Mr. Borden is asking why the 26% increase. So the mil rate would be on that, is 3.35 for ours, or if you got the USDA loan, once it's approved or applied for, would be 3.03. And the fourth page is something Charlie put together with numbers of what it would be on the 4% for 100,000, 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, 500,000. So the current rate, the known increase, looking at this year's budget, would be the 28.81, the, the school project at the 3.35. So that's the difference in the numbers, in the understanding of the breakdown of the sheet. Does that answer it, Brad? Okay.
John?
My name is John Olson, I live on Wyossepp Road. Just wanted to address the tax assessments. You, you have a picture here of a house, that, it's a nice house, but you have it underneath the average house assessment of $174,000, not accusing you of being deceptive or anything, but it would have been nice if a house that was for that figure would be there, so those who don't know their assessments, their taxes, could actually compare their house to the picture. You see, a lot of people don't have a tax bill that comes to them, like I do. Most people have a mortgage, and their taxes are rolled into their mortgage payment, so they never actually see what that increase is. I know my neighbor never does, he asks me all the time, what's the change in the mil rate this year? Well, based on the mil rate that's on this page, I'll be paying about, over the course of the 20 years of this loan, $50,000 to build this school. And that's with all the abatements and the assessments and grants you expect to get. Now, I don't have the kind of income that can support this. I've stood up at these proposals multiple times, and I've told you, you make a great job of assessing how the town as a town can get reimbursed by the state, and get the loan at a low rate so that the town can afford to do it. But very little work has been done on figuring out the income of the people who live here, and figuring out how to assess whether we can afford to do it. You said more than once that you think that shot down the last two times because of the price. Well, I believe that's true. I believe, and hopefully, not because I don't want a school built, not because I don't want kids to be educated in a proper classroom, but hopefully it goes down again, because I can't afford to do this. I know a lot of people that can't. I know people that have put their houses up for sale in town, and they've been told by their real estate agents, if this goes through, they can't sell their house, they most likely won't be able to get someone who can afford to pay it. This isn't just a small increase for one year, it's not a small increase at all, and it's going to be for 20 years, plus all the other future increases. This is a big impact, something worth thinking about.
Nick?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nick Mullein, I live at 28 Miller Road. I've been in town for 40-some years now. My three children have gone through the school system. They all are, I consider, educated, successful, and doing well. I'm also one of your selectmen. I looked at this project as being, yes, it is similar to the previous one, it is not the same. It is accumulation of everything we've learned through the three study committees. It has been addressed by the Board of Education in regard to how to improve, maintain, and better the education system. And right now, we have one of the best set of grades in southeastern Connecticut, and even have some grades on the state level, where we're number one. That's quite an achievement for a small school. In regard to voting, it's difficult to put up, please vote for option A, B, and C. The bond council says you have to put up one yes or no, put up the next one yes or no, put up the next one yes or no. So putting three or four up and vote on is not possible. Okay? What you get out of this is modernization of the facility, you get the safety issues addressed, you get the hazmat, you get increased education ability. Right now, you will be getting a 46% reimbursement. Compared to 1995, when we did the last project, it was 62. With the condition the state in, I doubt if next year, the reimbursement, or by the time we get one through, it'll be as high as what we're getting now. The project now, this year, will be lower than next year. The interest rate, I can't believe that we're as low as we have, and it is pretty much guaranteed, USDA has offered it. If we can consummate that and approve it through them, it will be done by June 30th. We're going to have a better operational capability, we're going to have a better maintenance capability, we're going to have a better environmental for the school, in regard to air quality and the rest of the improvements. The alternate, you looked at him up there, it's not cost-effective. What ultimate combination we'd have if the high school wasn't involved, don't forget we have a middle school, and that doesn't fit in to the elementary school, because right now, in the elementary school, we're already shifting the sixth grade from one side of the street to the other. So that's what the modernization in the elementary school is. And where we would end up with the seventh and eighth grade would be yet to be determined, and probably similar to what we're building onto for the high school and middle school The higher interest rate, as you look at the two pages, is significant. There's a significant savings in this, at this time. If we do anything less, there's going to be less construction and less benefit. We have a good town, we have a good quality of life. This will make the town more attractive to people, even though there's an increased cost. A lot of people want to come to a small town with a good quality of life, that has a safe environment, and has an outstanding education, which we have now. At this time, I want to commend the superintendent and the education staff for the good job they've done, and the type of marks we have. This is a good investment. This is a good investment to the town. We're going to have to invest a large amount of money. Can it be reduced? Not with a value. I was somewhat cautious on the first two presentations. After the two study committees and the third one accumulated, I am convinced that this probably is the best proposal to be provided to the town, and I'd ask you to support it. I think it's good for the town, I think overall, it'll help the town, it'll attract things, and it'll prove that really, nobody's got any complaints with a new fire station, with a new education system that goes pre-K through 12, with our set of marks and the performance we have. Please support this project.
Hi, Laura Tillinghast, I live up on Dennison Hill Road. My parents moved here in the 80s because of the schools. We moved from the Charrosh School District to North Stonington, because it was a great school system. My family and I chose to build here about 10 years ago, again, because of the schools. I want to commiserate about not getting a raise this year, I think a lot of us feel that, and as a mom of two teenagers, I kind of feel like my coffers are always empty, because someone always has their hand out. I just want to thank the Modernization Committee for putting this plan together. As a mom of two Wheeler students, I cannot praise the faculty, the staff, the administration of Wheeler enough, for knowing my kids. They know how to get the best, they expect the best, and not just for my straight-A girl, for my sometimes rambunctious C and B student in the middle school. I think the expectations at Wheeler are higher for all their students. They set their buy-high and expect results, which leads their students, it leads to higher student satisfaction, like Andrew said, it leads to higher SAT scores, and higher number of students going on to secondary education. If Wheeler has been doing this with these facilities, imagine what they can do with state-of-the-art facilities. They can provide an opportunity to ensure an amazing, an extraordinary education for generations of North Stonington families and Wheeler students to continue, and maybe that's the reason why more people will move here.
Hi, my name is Colleen Limpert, 63 Main Street. I'm not in approval of this project for several reasons. Number one, mil rate is too high already. Will not, it will go up considerably, not including the years-to-come increases in just our regular income or expenses. Student enrollment, I still haven't heard what the number is for this year. Do we have a number? It's graduating students this year.
Do you have that? Graduating students?
Our numbers have been consistent over the last 17 years.
You know the what?
Our numbers have been consistent.
Consistently in the 50s and 60s.
Correct.
We're not gaining either. Young families are not coming to this town because of our tax base. You don't see people moving into here, you see people moving out. I see signs go up every day for people moving out, they can't afford to live here any longer. I'm one of them. That is not a reason, people leaving town. We are not done paying for the emergency services building, we are not guaranteed that this will not run into cost overruns. If it passes, it wouldn't be done in a year. Do we really need state-of-the-art facilities? We pay for college for that. We pay for college for that. I am a minimalist. I have this little one-room schoolhouse on my property that I show to the kids every year. Guess what? They put all their money together, the townspeople, and they built that school, and they made that run with what they had. Twenty years, I've seen no economic growth in this town. None. None, really, to speak of, except maybe a porn shop. So I really don't see... You want rural, you want economic development. I see oxymoron going on here, and yet you want people to pay for it. It's going to come from the tax base, which is us, not economic development.
Christine Wagner. I live on Legendwood Road. I moved to this town nine years ago because it had a K-through-12 system. I could have moved to Stonington. I could have moved to Volentown if I wanted to ship my child somewhere. I could have moved to any number of things, but I moved here because it has a K-through-12 system. And I find it really disheartening to hear from so many people that put their child through school here and now has decided that my child needs diversity somewhere else. It hurts me. I don't understand it. I don't get why we don't back our children 100%. Somebody backed your child. If you can think back to when you had your child in school, how nice it was to have them down the street, how nice it was to know the teachers, how nice it was to know the other parents going to school with your kids, try to remember what that felt like. And if somebody else who no longer had children in the system said, "You need diversity for your child. You should put your kid on a bus for an hour and send him somewhere else." There are kids that will be on a bus for an hour because they live so far away, and they're not being bused directly to that school. They first have to be bused here, and then, again, bused to someplace else. So I can appreciate that it's a money thing, but to say that you want my child to have diversity, that's my choice as a parent. Thank you.
My name is Zoe Robert. I've been a student at Wheeler all my life. The school gave me so much, and I'm so grateful for the experience I've had at this school. But two months ago, I made the decision to move to Stonington High School because I wanted to change for myself. My parents loved me, and of course, they supported me and allowed me to transfer. Still, I attend others... I attend this school... Sorry. Still, I attend this other school. I have gone back to basketball games, charity events, concerts, and more at Wheeler, along with remaining to keep close relationships with friends and even teachers. My father stays on the Board of Ed and continues to support the new building project, and the school is staying open. The entire Robert family would never say anything otherwise and be crushed to see this school closed. I may no longer attend Wheeler, but that does not mean my family, nor I, do not still love this school and wish it the best of luck.
Christie Cathcart, Wyssup Road. I've done some searching on the Census website, and over 22% of the residents here in North Stonington are 60 years old or older, which means they're either on a fixed income or nearing a fixed income. There's 44.8% of the population that's between 19 and 59, so they're employed. The taxes that are mentioned for this, at the worst-case scenario, if the space allocation waiver was not provided, of $3.03 increase, that's a 12% increase over what we have now. Added to the things that Tim Maine talked about, the loss of the education funding from the state of Connecticut, the reduction in the grand list and all those other things, we're facing, if all of this goes through, including this project, a 20% increase in our property taxes. I doubt that anyone in this room, or anyone in this room's neighbors, have received a 12% to 20% raise in their income in the last year. The average income in this town, the median, the average, is $79,000. People with a $79,000 income living in North Stonington, that's a household, two wage earners in some cases, maybe doing more than one job. As a comment was made about that's one Starbucks coffee a day, people can't even afford the Starbucks coffee.
My name's Chris Anderson. I live on Miller Road. I've moved here about 20 years ago. I grew up in Volentown, right next door, and we have a K-through-8 system in Volentown. And then we got on a bus for an hour and a half to drive to Norwich, so I can speak from experience as to what that is like. And we went to a great school. They took us to NFA, and you know the great, all the opportunities that NFA gives you. I personally hated it. My brother, sitting right over there, he loved it. But what I can tell you is that when we graduated from eighth grade, I had 20 kids that I was best friends with. They were like my brothers and sisters. We were like thick as thieves. I don't know any of them hardly anymore. You know, we all went our separate ways. The way I look at this project, and I've been coming to these meetings for well over 10 years, I've seen all the different committees. The committee that did investigate schools of choice, did investigate regionalization. When back in regionalization, Stonington said, "We don't want you. We separated hundreds of years ago for a reason. You know, we don't want you." So I've watched... Each committee has looked at so many different variables here, and what it comes down to is this. I'm looking at the projects. We know we have a kindergarten, a first grade, a second grade, a third grade, a fourth grade, a fifth grade, right up to eighth grade, that we're going to have to educate in this community. Unless that's what we're really talking about. Are we going to just kick all the kids out of the community and call ourselves the villages? We can't do that. We're going to have to spend this money. And if we're going to renovate this school, K-through-8, it's going to cost just more money than it's going to cost us to build an entire complex. So we're going to give up everything that you've heard about, the quality of Wheeler education, for that? It doesn't make any sense. Listen, I grew up in a Scandinavian family. Three-quarters Finnish, one-quarter Swedish. Swedes drink. Finns are cheap. All right? So, listen, so I'm all for it. My mother was the chairman of the Board of Education in Volentown. She fought for her budget every single year in Volentown because in Volentown, there's nothing. You think, "We have no tax base. Move next door." So, and again, I've lived here for 20 years. I've got two kids that are in high school right now. By the time all this is done, they're going to be out. I've got a little guy in fourth grade. Maybe he'll be able to take advantage of something. But it's about your community. It's about investing in your community. If the roof doesn't... If your roof is broken in your house, you fix it. And you have to make some cuts somewhere to fix it. Well, there's no difference here. You're going to be able to put a state-of-the-art facility here, improve something that should have been done 20 years ago, and has been put off for 20 years ago. Nick's told you that. I mean, I've been at meetings when some people that are on finance committee, and some people are on selectmen, and some... They were on Board of Education, and there was no money for anything. You know, when there was cuts, and how can we cut here, and how can we sharpen our pencils here? Well, this seems like they've sharpened their pencils a lot. And you're going to get the benefit of keeping everyone here in our community. And then, you know what? When people see you start investing in your community, Brian, maybe then some businesses will come and invest in your community. Because we're lucky we got the people making olive oil down the street. Because if I was a business, I walked into this community and seen what was happening in this community presently, I wouldn't want to invest in this community. But if you start building a school and seeing how you're investing in a community, then you might see some action. That's it.
Sean?
I'm Sean Murphy, first selectman. I live at 23 Kingswood Drive. I stand over here at this microphone because I want to make clear that these are my opinions and not the opinions necessarily of the board, the entire board. Although, the board did vote 3 to 0 to forward this project to a town meeting and referendum. I want to make a couple of comments about, also about outsourcing the students. I think the North Stonington school system is number one in southeastern Connecticut. The state has various... I'm not sure how to say it. They have indicators in North Stonington that we are number one in southeastern Connecticut of all the towns around us. I don't think, you know, we've all read in the newspapers that Stonington is willing to take our high school students. That's really no surprise to me, and it shouldn't be a surprise to you. They are interested in the income that our students would bring to them, something that North Stonington would no longer be able to control. We might sign a contract with them at a certain rate for the first year, but there's no guarantee that we wouldn't see regular increases to that. They did not offer to take our middle school students. We would still have to do, you know, educate our middle school students. We would still have to build that new addition onto the gymatorium to house the middle school students. It would basically cost, in my estimates, it would basically cost 2/3 of the cost that it would for, you know, the entire student body of the middle school, high school. You still need the same spaces, computer labs, science labs, cafeteria, media center. You're going to have, of this project, you're still going to have to have a project over there to house the middle school. You're still going to have to have an elementary school. You're going to have to pay tuition to go to Stonington schools. You will not have a say in your child's education because they will not allow us to have a seat on their Board of Education. We will have no say as to how they choose what to educate the students, what programs they tend to offer. Everyone talks about the number of programs that other schools offer. If you look at North Stonington students, they may not have the complete range, but we, our students excel in the programs that we do offer. We offer a great number, for a small school, we offer a great number of advanced placement courses, for example. People talk about the sports and after-school activities that a school such as Stonington would offer us. Wheeler has a higher percentage of students participating in sports and after-school activities and clubs than any other school system, especially Stonington. Our kids are active here and get the best education. So outsourcing to me, not only are we would be giving up control, I think we're giving up on the quality of the education the students are getting, and I think it would cost us nearly as much. We may save a little. And to add, we also have the transportation costs. We'll have additional transportation costs and the length of time to bus all the students to Stonington. I think this, I know this is a real expensive proposition, a real expensive project. We've looked at it for a number of years, and this is the best alternative. Outsourcing is not the answer to this. Everyone considers outsourcing as being a cost savings, and we're not going to realize the cost savings that you believe, and we'll be giving up the quality education and the control we have. People talk about the, are people moving out of town and so forth. Yes, there has been a... If you look at North Stonington, we have the highest sales in real estate, the highest number of sales in real estate in southeastern Connecticut this past year. Despite the uncertainty of where our kids are going to go to school, we still are selling more homes, a higher percentage of homes in North Stonington than we are in, say, New London County. To touch on a little bit, if I could have one more minute, please, to touch a bit on economic development. People are saying that we're anti-development, and that is just not true anymore. We have a new set of zoning regulations that are friendly to the developers. We have a position in the town as an economic development coordinator that's been helping us to promote economic development. As equal important, he's been working with businesses to ensure that their needs and that they have, they want to stay in North Stonington. And that's very important, to maintain your existing business bases as well. I could mention a few of the things that have happened here most recently. Everyone knows of Jovial Foods down the road. We also have, on that same stretch of Route 2, right next to the Cedars Motel, you'll see a yellow house that's being torn down. That's making way for a dairy processing facility where they will process butter to turn, turns it into ghee, I guess. I don't know what this stuff is, but... We have Quinlan Enterprises that have bought Fisher Control and have been filling up that spaces, renting space out. And I might add, they've been trying to buy additional space, land in town, so they can expand. They have made an offer on other property in town. We have an 80-acre solar farm that is being proposed for the Romanilla gravel bank property. We have a propane processing facility that is proposing to locate on 184, near the truck And I can't even read my own writing. Oh, there's a developer that's trying to, is asking us to turn some land up on the west end of Route 2 and change over residential to commercial because he is proposing a grocery store and pharmacy, and has some other ideas for that site. He's a developer that has proven to develop, do developments in the Old Lime area, so there's a great, there's a possibility there. We are active in economic development. We have seen an increase. You've probably read in the newspaper, as far as a percentage, there's greater, more economic development going on in North Stonington than any towns around us. So I think this project is the best thing for North Stonington in the long run. It's expensive. Yes, there will be individuals that it will be hard to make ends meet, but we will see an influx of families that do care about their kids' education moving into town once we send the signal that we care.
Good evening. Peter Nero, Superintendent of Schools. Sean, you forgot to mention that our hens made their debut on Route 2 today because we are raising our own chickens and hens. We got rid of some of the roosters. If anybody would like some roosters, you can see the principal. About five weeks ago, there was an article that came out, to my surprise, from another school district, and I think Sean touched upon it, because they were looking at some erroneous numbers in terms of our per-pupil cost. Our per-pupil costs run about $100 and something dollars more than they do in Stonington. And what they did was they took a schedule that is unaudited. And that schedule, that unaudited schedule, did not include the middle school students in it. So basically, our middle school students were figuring they were going for free, which they weren't. They were grouped in with the high school students. So when you put the 200 or so students in with the high school students, it brought the average down from 29 something down to the number it is, somewhere around $15,000 per student, which were about average compared to all the districts, a little lower than some around here. So here's the part that scared me, if we were ever to ever be, and the only person, the only people that can really close a school is the Board of Education. They have the statutory authority to either open a school or close a school. But here's what scares me, if we're, somewhere down the line, we were to close Wheeler. During the vacation time, I looked at the numbers of the last six years of the, let's say, for example, Stonington, because they made the offer. They wanted our kids. So in 1213, their budget went up 1.35%. In 1213, their budget went up 3.15%. 1314, their budget went up 2.96%. 1415, their budget went up 2.96. Again, same number. 1516, it was 3% last year. And this year, their proposed budget, it looks pretty well, it's going to pass, it's 2.88. It's 2.88. You want, I'll say it over again? Ian, I'll say it again. Okay, in 1112, Stonington's budget went up 1.35. 1213, 3.15. In 1314, their budget went up 2.96. 1415, their budget went up 2.96 again. It was 3.0 this present year that we're in, and it's proposed 2.88, which likely it's going to pass by the paper. North Stonington went up in 1112-0. 1213, it went up one-tenth, a little more than one-tenth of 1%. My first full-year superintendent, I hit the lottery. It went up 4.97%. It passed pretty much overwhelmingly. And that's one of the reasons why you're seeing test scores, because we put math help at the elementary school, literacy help at the elementary school. And we were able to put some additional math help at the high school as well, and literacy help at the high school. So that's what we saw. Now, these are proposed budgets by, that were voted on by you. We proposed a zero budget in 1415 that passed. A 1516, a zero budget that passed. And this year, our proposed budget is 1.97%, although Tim Main said, "Don't hold your breath, Peter. We're in front of the board on Wednesday night." So here's the point that I'm going to get at. The $3 million that they said we will be able to use to open up, help us defray the cost of a new K-8 school or renovator K-8 school was not there. There was no savings, folks, because the number was wrong. It wasn't $29,000 a year, so you weren't saving $15,000 a year. But this is the part that bothers me. What happens in the long run if every year, the 200 kids who would go to Stonington, and by the way, they're cheaper than it is at Leggitt, and Leggitt's laying off teachers, and their budget's still going up phenomenally. And if you go to NFA, their budget goes up 4% a year. So what happens when the kids that go to the high school, the 200 kids, and that budget increases every year, and you go to me and say, "Mr. Superintendent and Board of Ed, do your magic, bring it down to zero." The cost of, what it's going to cost to send our kids to high school is going to reflect and take away from our kids who are in grades K-8. You need to think about that. Not only you're not going to have any control over the curriculum, but you're not going to have any control over, you're not going to have a person on the Board of Ed. And if your kid has a problem in schools and you're a non-voter in that town, you have no recourse. But again, the biggest thing that I worry about is what is going to happen to our kids who are going to remain and hear from K-8. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ann Aiken. I'm a resident of North Stonington. I want to thank everybody that has worked on this. I know you've put a lot of work into it, and I appreciate the fact that you have been reducing the amount every time. But I'm sorry, I still can't afford it. But even if I did approve of this, I could not approve of the question as written. As written, it does not include the stipulation that it does not go forward without the state reimbursement. And without that in the question, I am effectively saying, yes, spend the money, spend all the money. And that's not right. So at the very least, I would like to see the question rewritten to include that stipulation before I vote on it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Will Mason. I grew up in this town, born and raised. Went from kindergarten through senior high school. Graduated, went on to other school after. Don't, you can't tell from the way I'm dressed, but I came here straight from work. I work hard for my money. I moved away from town for a while, and I enjoyed my time in other places. I lived in two or three other states. But when it came time to have my kids go to school, I moved home because this is the place I wanted my kids to go to school. And we've been in town here for nine years, and my two oldest are in eighth grade this year, going into high school. And one of them is a straight-A student and would excel anywhere, absolutely anywhere. One of them has slight learning disabilities, processing issues, and he has excelled here. We hear, we hear about people who want to go to other schools because they've got more programs. That was me when I was in high school. I am built for football, and we don't have that here. I was not built to run down a soccer field. I wanted to do other things, but the education that I got in this town prepared me for the rest of my life because I wasn't going to play football for the rest of my life. But I do use the accounting skills that I learned in my business that I own and that I run. That was prepared, I was prepared for that by going to Wheeler High School. There are kids in other towns who are now going to larger schools because they don't have an option to come to Wheeler and have the small school surroundings. And they would love to. We heard from one of them tonight. He loves his education here at Wheeler and the class size that he gets and the individual attention he gets. If we do this, those students who could use that small school environment can come here if we open that up to other communities. Possibly. Looking at the first selectmen. If we give them the option in other communities around here to bring their students here so they can enjoy the small school that we have and the environment that we have and the teaching opportunities that they will get here, that would be wonderful, and it would help to fray the costs that we are incurring. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Moore, and I'm not one for speaking in public, but I just felt that I should say something. We moved here in 1994 from another very small town in Connecticut. And the reason that we chose to move to North Stonington was because of the school. My kids, I have four. Three of them attended Wheeler. Two of them, pretty much until they graduated. One of them went to the Groton Tech School. And he did very well there. He needed to go there. But Wheeler was a very good thing. And it still is. It's a very good thing. And we struggled to do this. We didn't really know from year to year whether or not we were going to be able to afford to stay here. We really had to work hard. And our kids did very well now. My son Nathan Moore is teaching Spanish at Griswold. And he loves it, and the children love him, and he's very successful. And I think that has a lot to do with him attending Wheeler here because it was a small school. And I'm not saying it was easy. And I know this is an easy decision for people to make. It's very hard for me even. I'm still tossed. But I think having the school in town is a very, very good thing for our community. Thank you.
I'm, are we? Oh, oh, sorry, Mustafa. Sorry.
My name is Mustafa Ratiib. I live in 92 Main Street. And I used to live in Boston. My wife came from New York. And we had opportunity to go either to Boston or to New York, but we decided to stay here. And the reason we decided to stay here is because of our kids. I have two kids, Nadia and Gemma, six and nine years old. Nadia is okay, she's good, she's a student, you know. Every, every week she will bring her, her papers with 108. She always has an extra points, and we're proud. She works hard because of this school. Now Gemma, on the other hand, she has a hearing problem. Thank God she's an independent kid. She, she knows what she's trying, what she's doing. She knows what she wanted. But if she was not in this school, we would have a big issue. In the beginning of the year, believe it or not, I have this kid bringing her tests, dictation, math, or whatever, crying, crying, six years old. Why? Because she's like, "Why I'm getting this lower grades and other kids are better than me?" Well, go figure. How can I answer that question? I can't. No, because of the teachers here, thank you very much to all of them. The kid with the timing test, what we call in math, timing, they time them, how many, you know, correct answers they got. She used to get 15, 14, over 30. Lately, believe it or not, she's getting 28, 29, over 30. You can't believe how that kid is happy. Well, I'm happy, and her mother is happy too. And thanks to this school again, and I appreciate all the work they're doing. And I cannot move my kid to North, to Stonington where she will not have the same thing. But if we do, I have to move to Stonington. I have to move. I need to vote. I need to talk to the teachers. I need to be with my kid. There's no way. And I think other families have the same idea, who they have kids, or maybe they have kids with issues like my daughter. Now, I know we have to pay for that. I'm on the Board of Finance, and I understand that. I'm not exempt. I pay taxes too. When I vote on mill rate to go up, I know I'm going to be affected as well. And I'm middle-class as everybody else. But this is for a good reason. And I think we need to support this project, and this project will help us to go forward. And if this project goes down, nothing will go forward in this, this town. Thank you very much.
Ann, I'm going to let Pam go because she's been standing there for quite a long time, which I didn't realize. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, I had mentioned before, I'm Pam Potemory, and I live on Pinecrest Road. And I just had a couple of questions. Tim, I see you standing, so that might be my first one because I just want some clarification to make sure. I'm not a mathematician, but on the, the added tax assessment page, can you explain to me where these numbers come from? Just because they're not adding up to me, and I just was wondering if you can explain that a little bit.
If you're on page four, that's where I was headed. So yeah, it was just brought up, and we just, we just discussed that page four should disregard, we're going to adjust those on Wednesday. But if you go to the tax calculator that Mike had, it'd be the easiest way to do that because these numbers are off.
Okay, so don't, don't reference any of these numbers?
No, because they're, they're off. But the easiest way is to go to that, go to the website, go to the calculator and do your assessment.
All right, I was just getting a little nervous there. So I'm like, okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
They're off, so.
All right, great. Just, I also want to remind, Mr. Nero had mentioned about how we lose local control over certain situations curriculum. If we go into an arrangement with another district, they can set their rates as far as tuition at anything they want it to be. Yes, there's a contract, but that contract has language in it that allows for increases for a variety of reasons. So I, I want to make sure that we're transparent about that. And I also think it's really important for people to understand that we talk about a per pupil cost, but we haven't talked about the per pupil cost for special education students. And that's not your average student, and that's not the 14,000 per student or roughly thereabouts. The cost to educate special education students is great, and in some cases, very significant. And there's a lot of factors that go into how we educate students with special needs. And one of the benefits of being a representative of the district in making those determinations is making sure that we're meeting student needs in the most cost-efficient ways. And the fact of the matter is that I do represent a district where I don't have control over that. And I'm often left in a position to have to represent to the Board of Education why an unanticipated cost of literally hundreds of thousands of dollars is presented to them, sometimes on a bi-weekly basis, and explain how we're going to come up with the money to pay for that. So I do think it's important to know that we do lose control over high-ticket items such as that when we do have students who are out of district. If, for example, we were to send a student to, say, Stonington at the high school level, and we were not the local representation because we didn't have control over the student at that grade level, then it would be their team that would determine whether or not their school could meet that child's needs. And if they determined that they could not meet the student's needs, they would send the student out of district, and we would hold the cost. And we'd have no say or control in that decision. So I want you to be very aware that we're making more decisions related to fiscal impact than simply what we've talked about tonight. I also wanted to just mention one other quick, quick fact. And I do look at the facts. So I think there's a lot of emotion, but I think that at the end of the day, I do look at what does statistics and what do data tell us? And the fact is, is that small schools, and you can reference research, but I look at local statistics. And I look at some of the indicators locally. How are our students faring with outcomes? So where are they five years out? Where are they two years out? Where are they one year after graduation? And I can tell you that only five colleges in the U.S. are harder to get into than the U.S. Naval Academy, and Wheeler, right now, has three graduates. So I think that's pretty significant. I also look at even the new indicators that came out, that really rated Wheeler. Those are all based on the nine most recent indicators for school success, for student success. Small class size, small school size, personalization, attendance, graduation rates, and outcomes. So look at the facts before you vote on emotion. Thank you.
Ann, I apologize.
That's okay. I'm Ann Allwack. I live in Northwest Corner Road. And while you're talking about those tests, I think that's the results I've been carrying around here that I really thought everybody should know about. Wheeler got 88.2%. The store, school that our students might go to most likely, Stonington, 80. 80.1, that's down eight points from, from Wheeler. Leggitt was a little better at 85.8. NFA, 69.6. Is that where you want your children to go in addition to being bigger schools without the personal attention? I think these numbers, to me, say a lot. I'm also afraid of what the reputation of our town is going to be. If we can't support that good emergency services building where we need one because they can't get new fire engines in the current one, the roofs leak. If we can't support a new school so our kids have a good place to go to school and be top-notch, we're going to be a backwater town. And then who do you think is going to want to come here? And I think as Shaun pointed out, there are things happening. They happen slowly, and maybe you don't see them all, but they are there. So I think we have to look at what kind of future we're going to be. If we go nowhere, we'll be going nowhere. And, and that's, that's sad. I know it's hard, but think how many cups of coffee, that is. Maybe you have a little less cup of coffee. Maybe you won't go out for breakfast five times a week or something. But it's doable. And I just think it's important.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
How you doing? David Sellins, Oak Colony Road. Just a couple add-ons, I guess. One of the things, they were talking about the mill rate increases, and I thought it was really important to point out that the largest increase in that mill rate on the Board of Finance is described as a zero-sum game. Basically, the property values through North Stonington went down. Therefore, the .98, I believe, I don't have the number in front of me, mill increase was basically to get back to the same amount of income. So your taxes stay the same, right? Value of a house went down. So it is not, it's across the town. That's, that's why the Board of Finance has it. I see a lot of heads shaking, no. So if there's another Mike, feel free to educate me why it's wrong. That's my understanding. So that's one of the things I would like to encourage, right? Is we got to understand the values of the houses, what the mill rate means. We compare a lot, mill rates of our town to other towns. If you don't look at the If you don't look at the whole values of where the houses are, what the mill rates are, there's a big difference, right? Everyone needs money. You look at a town like New London, their mill rate's really high, their property value's kinda low, right? So there's impact there. I get it, it's an increase. Increases stink, we all gotta pay more taxes. I'm with you. From the small school size, I guess the one point I'd like to make, I graduated in ninety-three, I had a, basically, one computer class junior year. I had a computer teacher that had ten kids in that class through my senior year, knowing that's where I wanted to go into my degree. He offered to teach me basically extra computer classes through senior studies. So that small class is what helped him do that. I was basically a TA for that class, learning different languages, doing, excuse me, extra in the spare time. He taught me extra languages. I walked into a college where a lot of really big class, really big school kids went in, none of them had computer programming classes back then, never mind three semesters of computer programming. I also think it's very important that the point of bringing them to a Stoneington or a bigger school opens opportunity. I would argue, to that same vein, it's the dead opposite, right? There's now a lot of online classes that are offered. You basically need a teacher that kinda sponsors you through it, walks you through the program, the school is liable for it, but the classes are not in this. You don't have teachers that have classes of fifteen, twenty, teaching those classes. You might be the only one in the entire school doing it, but you're working with a teacher that volunteers to help you through that and go through that. So there are lots of opportunities in a small school like this that they don't necessarily have where the teachers are taxed with a number of students and things like that. And I guess the last point that I'd make is, closing the school is a giant, non-recoverable issue, right? If you were to close the school down, you are not ever going to get a budget back that you can reestablish the education system, you can reestablish the teachers, right? The program, the building, those things. Where you have opportunities, that we're talking about, bringing businesses in, changing the business plan to get opportunity into town, is a fixable thing. We do have the vote in that. We can fix things there. So yes, it stinks in the short term to raise the rates, pay more taxes. However, that's a fixable thing. We can do the vote, we can get the people in here, and we can work on that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Need, I realize I wasn't the first one in line, but may I respond to that text, the mill rate increase assessment question?
Briefly.
Yes, briefly. For those that aren't aware, the way the mill rate is attached to a property assessment is a very convoluted process. I've been trying for over three years to get the book to explain the math behind that process. But what assessments do whenever we have these mill rate decreases that we're told, but the mill rate, sorry, the property assessments go down, the mill rate needs to be raised, so it's supposed to be a zero-sum game. Well, not everybody's house in town had a lower mill rate, sorry, I'm getting the words confused. They did not, everyone did not get a property evaluation that went down. It's happened three times in a row now where we're going to vote on things like this, and there's this assessment where everybody's rates go down. At least, that's what you're told. But there are many of us in town whose house values go up to compensate for a great deal of the loss before the mill rate gets adjusted. Mine has never gone down. Mine goes up when the property assessments go down, mine goes up when the property assessments go up. And I'm not the only one. And I'm acquiring a list of the names of the people in town whose houses continually go up regardless of what the assessments are. And I'm curious to see, when I get that book, which I've been trying for almost three years to get from the Tax Assessor's Office, to explain this process. Because they just say it's a state assessment process, it's a book that has all these calculations in it, but just like most of the budgets that are presented to us, we don't get all the details. So I can't explain to you how mine always goes up and some of yours went down. But don't think that this mill rate is to be a neutral for everybody. There are a lot of us where it never goes down.
Excuse me. Lisa.
Hi, my name's Lisa Mizella. I live on Cassattak Hill Road. Over the last couple of months, I hear a lot of people saying, we'll just close the school. They say, we'll just close the school. Our problems will be solved then. We don't need to do this build. We'll just send them out. We can't afford the build. Well, we're still gonna pay tuition for the kids to go out, as we've talked about, but there's also a whole lot left behind if the, to send the kids out, there still has to be a building project. We still have asbestos and lead and PCB removal in all the buildings. They still have to move the computer room to the first floor, so the first little kindergarten and first grader don't have to go upstairs. There's still, have to update the buildings to meet the current codes for the fire in the building and the ADA and health and energy and the Title IX and everything else that you guys all see on the slides there too, so I don't need to read it all. That still all has to happen. And my fear is, if this gets voted down, there's gonna be either this committee or a new committee appointed, and it's gonna take another year to come up with a new plan to address the needs of the K through eight system. The reimbursement will go down, no, down. The interest rates will go up, it's gonna cost more money to have less, and then we lose the heart of our town because we thought that we were gonna be doing the right thing. Well, I had three kids, now this is where intangibles come in, where to some, this doesn't matter to some, it matters a great deal to many of us. We live kind of in a village, and we take care of each other. I had three kids who graduated already from Wheeler in oh-three, oh-five, and oh-seven. Two of my children own very successful businesses. Then I have another child who became a nuclear engineer. And they didn't do that without getting the nurturing and care and confidence that they garnered from this small town. Now, I hear, you know, a lot, this is expensive, but I'm not sure I like the word expensive, because like, my car is expensive, but it loses value. Education is a good investment, and investment garners revenue, results, you know, things get better, you know, people grow, and the community grows. So I've been writing notes for a couple hours, so I'm sorry, I'm a little all over the place. But I do feel, and I do understand folks on fixed incomes, but there is an elderly homeowner's credit available, and the benefit ranges from a hundred and fifty dollars to twelve hundred and fifty dollars off your town property taxes. And also, veterans can receive an increase in benefits if they qualify for the elderly homeowners program. It's called the Assessor's Office. The reason I know this is because I read the North Stoneington Quarterly. So I think that that's about it. I'm obviously in support of the project. I think it's a, I think we can't afford not to do it. So that's all.
Speak up here as a citizen, Kingswood Drive. I have a question and then a couple of comments. Tim, was this paperwork, these, I heard Pam, but I stepped out, was this voted on to put out by the Board of Finance? The paperwork that's over on the table here, Tim Main?
Yes. It was approved by your committee.
So this document was approved by your committee to put out?
It was approved by the committee.
Okay. I have a couple of problems, and I don't mean this personally, but I'm gonna make it a little bit personal, because I've given up an incredible amount of time of my life over the last year to work very hard to inform people with correct information. And in one swoop, we have had a town meeting with the most people I've ever seen at it, half of them are gone with inaccurate information. So I take that personally. This, I don't need to go on about this, the cost of this project is less than any of the other options. That's what it comes down to. For those who are not in favor of it, you must understand, the committees that have been appointed over the last ten years, these are not idiots. These are people who come from very diverse backgrounds. We have lawyers, we have a student, we have a financial professional, we have an educator, we, and this is just this committee, we have people that, they're retired, they don't have kids in schools. They, it's a very diverse background of people that are involved. So I guess my point is, these people who've been involved over the last ten years or whatever, have come up with something that, some of them have kids in schools, maybe it benefits them, many of them don't. But if you look at the information here, this is the lowest-cost option. So if you're gonna oppose the project, I don't know what anyone would be looking for as a better alternative, because we've gone over just about everything and every alternative that could be gone over. And I hope that was apparent tonight. The last point I have is just, on a personal note, I went to Ashaway Elementary School, which was great, and I was a pretty good kid when I went there, and went over to the middle school, which was regional at Cherahoe, and I'm not gonna diss Cherahoe, but for me, I really could have benefited from a small school. And I see my kids benefiting from a small school. And honestly, my experience through middle school and high school wasn't that great because I probably could have benefited from a smaller atmosphere, like I see a lot of the kids here. So I hope you'll support the project.
Is anyone else waiting to speak? David, are you waiting to speak? Yeah, you're all set. Okay. Yes. Yes, Sean. Of course, of course, you may make a comment, shorter than the last one, though.
I'm looking at these, I guess these numbers have been pulled from consideration, but I'd like to offer my own analysis of the tax consequences of this project. The selectmen sent to the Board of Finance a general government, capital, debt reduction, and education numbers included in a budget that would require a point seven mil increase in next year's taxes. From being at Board of Finance meetings, I have an understanding, and I actually encourage them to add to that budget an amount for the emergency services building, regardless of whether we were going to start making actual loan payments next fiscal year, just to start saving. Similar to, like we do when we start saving on an annual basis for revow. That people have already voted on the emergency services building, and we should start taxing on that. That will only reduce the principal we have to borrow in the end. The cost of, the effect of that project added another point eight one mil to what would be needed. So in essence, I could see the mill rate being twenty-seven point eight one. Let's round it to twenty-eight. Twenty-eight mils, we should be able to get by. That has nothing to do with the school project. That is going, that needs to happen in order to fund the budget, to fund the emergency services project. Twenty-eight mils, that increase will be required. Yes, it too is expensive. The school project itself represents about a three mil increase. They have used numbers on here as, assuming that we would be borrowing the twenty-three million instead of the twenty-one million. But regardless, if the increase from that twenty-eight mil to the thirty-one mil, it would only, it would be a thirty-one mil to accommodate the school project. Yes, that's a significant amount. And not everyone has an understanding of the mill rate and applying and so forth, but that is a ten percent increase in your taxes, just so you have an understanding of where that is. You all have an idea of what your assessment is. It's hard to consider what three mils is equal to, but it's a ten percent increase in your taxes for the school project. And the other numbers are going to happen regardless. The increase is necessary to fund next year's expenses, the reduction in the revenue from the state, the emergency services, that is already, that's almost a done deal unless we significantly slash the operating budget that the, you know, the schools and the town are asking for. So just so you have an understanding, this project represents a ten percent increase in your taxes and no more. Thank you.
Mike?
I think Amy was first.
I'm sorry, Amy?
Amy French, Babcock Road. I just, I have two children in the school system. I have two children in the school system, graduate of Wheeler High School, very proud of it. I have, I should say, my son actually now goes to Grosso Tech, because academically, to be honest with you, he wouldn't do well at Wheeler. He's a very hands-on kid. He does go to Grosso Tech. Unfortunately, he does plumbing, and he likes it. He decided that he wanted to come back to Wheeler, but it was also too late, which, once he was there, I said, you're not coming back. And he's doing well. He will graduate on the seventeenth. But then I have a daughter, who is nineteen, with special needs. She still gets speech. She works. You have to consider those children. You're gonna disrupt every child that is different. They have routine. It's gonna be sad if that's what you think, that every child is the same. They are not. They are not. And it is sad to think that, and I understand the taxes, I get that, I understand that, but you have to think of where our children are gonna go. My daughter, she thrived here so well in a small school. She wouldn't have if she was, she would have been petrified. And if that's gonna happen, she still has three more years to go for speech, and I don't, and I transport her. I don't require the town to transport her, because we only live a quarter of a mile. You have to figure out transportation for these children, because they do not have to go on a bus with regular educated children. So you're gonna have to spend transportation for the special ed kids, and that's so much more. You're not thinking about that. Transportation is expensive, even for the kids who are out of school now, who still are in the system, as she could be paid, as you could be paying for her to be trucked to Kids &amp; Co., which is two miles down the road. You could pick her up at my house and bring her to speech. It works for my family to transport her. There are so many other kids in the system that do the same thing. You have to pay, it's a third-party system, you have to pay for. It is so outrageous. When I looked at the school, I said, that's crazy. We live a quarter of a mile, we can work it out, we'll work, we'll pay, we'll do it. You don't get that. And I have a question for Mr. Main. Is there, Tim? Tim, is there gonna, are, how are we gonna, are you going to give something out that has the correct numbers on it, so the people have something?
Yes, we will. The first three pages are correct. The, all the numbers on the fourth page are actually all low, so then those numbers will rise. We'll correct that on Wednesday.
How do you?
How are we gonna undo this? I guess that's my opinion.
Look, I guess what I'm saying is this, I've been frustrated, because there are things that are posted online that are not exactly the truth. And I go back to the twenty-nine thousand dollars, as I explained in emails, if you saw the FY that came in, it was a person questioning, but never, ever put any information that we put in there regarding explanation. My point is, exactly, some people left, and they left with this. How do we undo this? And I hope this is not gonna be posted tomorrow and say, this is the absolute gospel truth, because it is not. And those are the things that we've been fighting for the last three months. So I guess what I'm saying is this, I know if the Board of represented a budget that was off, we'd all be walking out with our, you know, looking, let's say ridiculous, I don't wanna say that, because I respect, obviously, the Board of Finance, but how do we undo this for the people who left tonight?
Could I suggest that that should be something that's discussed outside of the meeting, however? I think in the interest of what we're focused, I understand, Peter, what you're saying, but I think it should be discussed outside of this meeting. I think it should be discussed outside of this meeting. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Mike?
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Anderson. I live on Casade Hill Road, sort of. I'm on one of those little side streets that's not really on Casade. My brother spoke earlier. I did like to go to NFA, but I think, to be honest, one of the reasons was, 'cause he had a car, I didn't have to take the bus, he drove, I, I went with him every day. I never had to take the bus. And by the time he was out of there, I had my own car, so I would've hated it if I had to take a bus. To the gentleman who was talking about the, the taxes, I am getting the double whammy, my, my assessment went up, but the, and the mil rate is going up, so I am gonna get higher taxes. But despite that, I am supporting the project because this is the best project for our town. I was on, I am on the ad hoc committee, I'm speaking for myself. The reason why we're here for another vote, folks, is because the problems didn't go away. Right? And our elected officials understood that after 2014, that the problems didn't magically go away because you all said, "No." The problems with this school, this facility, built in the 60s, 1960s, still exist. This floor, you're all on notice, is very dangerous. Hopefully, no one gets hurt, and any lawyers out there sue people. The facilities over there are outdated with the hazmat issues, air quality issues, the science lab issues, we probably brought this whole thing up in the first place, back in the early 2000s with the accreditation from NEASC that said, "You cannot educate your kids in this type of facility." These problems haven't gone away. And they're not gonna go away by shipping the kids out, because you still have to educate K through 8 here. Can't fit them here. You gotta build a bigger school, Brian, or build an extradition over there, and then you still send your kids elsewhere where, I believe the town of Stonington is voting on a $69 million project right now for their two middle schools. Who's gonna pay for that increase over there? Probably the tuition of anyone that comes there from out of, out of town. Guess who that'll be if you'd send them over there? Us. NFA, I wouldn't wanna send my kids to NFA these days. I went there, my wife went there, my in-laws still live in Norwich, they're trying to get out. The, uh, my family still lives in Volentown. One thing that, I grew up one mile from the North Stonington border. Walter Oloma was our, one of our best friends. He taught here in, in North Stonington. Linda Miller, my aunt, she was sixth grade teacher here. There's something about North Stonington that, the education level, not to knock, knock the Eagles of Volentown, but the education level in North Stonington was something to be admired when I was a kid. You guys, this town was always on the forefront of environmental awareness, the, the farming community, the, the camaraderie in this town around the farmers was amazing, they didn't have that in Volentown. I know, because Byron Gallup was a good friend of mine, they're 13 generation, he's like, he's besides himself, besides how the, how farming is just not appreciated anymore. I know I'm rambling, but, um, North Stonington had something special, and the reason is because it has a K through 12 system. This town is special because of this school. The needs aren't going away, we need to fix them. And one, my last other point, in November, there was a, there was an election for selectmen. I'm on the ad hoc committee, and I asked a certain person that was running for selectmen whether or not regionalization was still something that we were supposed to look at as an ad hoc committee. And that person running for selectmen said, "Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Off the table. Not a question." That's why, I was like, "Okay." 'Cause if it's not, if we asked about regionalization in November, uh, we would never get to a referendum right now, because that's a whole, whole nother wormhole to go down. That's crazy. And just because Stonington brought it up, doesn't mean it's a good idea. It wasn't a good idea four years ago when the town said, "No," and the, and the Board of Education voted unanimously to say, "No," and they just voted unanimously again to say, "No," because it's off the table. You told me it was off the table in November. Otherwise, was I wasting my time here? Bob, was I wasting my time here? Do you remember that conversation? In my driveway?
Mike? We-
We gotta do this project. Thank you.
Thank you.[1087.75][1087.75](APPLAUSE)
Just a quick comment on the, the numbers. Peter, you were upset, and then anyone would be if the numbers are not accurate. It's one of the things that seems to happen often here in town is, we have this referendum coming up, we have one of the largest attended meetings, and then we don't have all the details in order. This isn't the first time. I highly recommend, in the future, whatever comes up, whatever project, whether it's the school or the firehouse or anything else that we ever do, let's put some more time between this meeting and the vote, so that if there are any discrepancies, if there are any miscommunications, they can be corrected. There's time to get the word out to those that left before they got it corrected. This happens all the time.
Okay. Thank you. Brad?
Yes, Brad Ward in Swan Town Hill. I'd just like to sum up what I believe the, the tax increases, Mr. Murphy said, be 10% on this project. Then if you add the emergency services, and you add the school budget for the coming year, and the town budget for the coming year, and you add the devaluation, the deva, devaluation was, before the new assessment was 530 million, and then the new assessment came out at 517 million, and the difference is three, it comes out to percentage of 3.4%. So, if you add all that stuff together, you got, will have a tax increase of 17 to 20% roughly, depending on interest rates and timing. Some of that won't be all next year, because it will be a, a year or so down the road before everything goes into effect, but some will happen, but the, the total will be around 17, 20%.
Okay. I-
I just wanna say, throughout history, people have made sacrifices. They've made sacrifices for others for no other reason than it was the right thing to do. Frequently, they paid all kinds of prices, financially and, and otherwise. I have no kids in Wheeler, I've never had any kids in Wheeler, I'm on a fixed income, I pay a lot of taxes, but this is the right thing to do. Please do it.[1255.51][1255.51](APPLAUSE)
Since this is a person who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, go ahead. I'm sorry.
My name's Nikki Dean. Sorry if my voice is a little shaky, I hate talking in front of people. I live on Pond Drive in North Stonington. I grew up, I went to this school here. I like the small environment. Is it a lot of money and can I afford it? I don't know. I'm gonna try because it's for my kids. The thing that I, I liked about growing up in a small school is, I still remember most of my teachers. Mrs. Scott, the computer teacher, she had little things that she would do with us, and she said, "If you can beat my test, my typing test, I'll pass you." What's her called? Mrs. Miller, there was no running allowed in the hallways, she would skip and make us laugh all the time. Mrs. Banker, she always used to say, "Please, no swearing. I picture what you guys say." Little things like that, that you remember throughout your years, happens in a small school like this. And the only reason why I'm standing up here is because of her. I had to give a speech in my class, or else you would fail. I hate it, I absolutely hate it, but I'm up here doing it because of people like her.
Thank you.[1341.23][1341.23](APPLAUSE) And another person who hasn't spoken yet. I apologize to the crowd here.
My name's Lou Steinbrecher. I live on Wyossef Road. I moved to this town 30-plus years ago as a single person, no kids. Can't hear me, Anne, sorry. But I moved here, I didn't have any kids in the system, I, I wasn't married, but I moved to North Stonington because of the school district. I researched the towns around. I was 22-year-old, 22-years-old, and I bought a house in Kingswood, and loved every minute of it, and met great people and great families, and watched their kids go through Wheeler. I'd been attending graduations for 20-plus years. I put three kids through the, through school here. Actually, you all did. And they got a great education. I wouldn't have wanted them to go anywhere else. And they got everything they needed from the school. If there was a special course they wanted, the school found a way to accommodate them. Special courses in music, computers, you name it, they got it. When my son wanted to graduate a year early, they found a way to do it. And he wasn't a great A student or anything else, but he wanted, he was ready for college. Is he gonna get that somewhere else? I don't think so. And now, I have three kids in college. How am I gonna pay for the tax? I don't know, but I'll find a way. But, because the kids of this community deserve it. And if you do do this, I believe you will get more economic development. One of the things that's held this town down for so long is said, "Oh, the schools are gonna close, the schools are gonna close." So, what's the realtor gonna tell everybody? "Well, school's closing, why do you wanna go move there?" Is that what you wanna tell everybody? "Well, school's closing, just go move someplace else." 'Cause then you get what you ask for. But if you want progress and you want, move forward, you wanna have a good school, this is the best project, because guess what? You think something's gonna cost you less, doing nothing is gonna cost you almost as much as this, if not more in the end. So, I, I think people should support this project.[1476.51][1476.51](APPLAUSE)
Joe?
A little sorry I waited so long. Joe Potemory. I live over on, in the neighborhood over there as well. We have kinda beaten a lot of things, back and forth. I only came up, one, to voice my support for this project, two, simply because I need to plug our rec department and our rec commission and the programs that we have here in town as well, 'cause without our high school athletes, all of those rec programs go right down the toilet with them. So, those things that support all of our little kids up through middle school, all of the different programs, they don't run without our high school athletes, and if those high school athletes are playing somewhere else, then that goes away as well. I have been an educator, high school educator, for 25 years. I have coached a variety of sports, and I have advised a variety of clubs. I can talk about kids that thrive in big schools and kids that thrive in small schools. There's an example everywhere. Everyone's gonna talk positively about their experiences or negatively about their experiences. Those are individual. But as a town, the source of pride for any town, for any city, no matter how small or how big, is the high school. It is the place, when I moved here, I was told three things. If you live here, you do three things. You go to the town fair, you do something at the holidays, I don't even, I haven't been to that one yet, and you go to high school graduation, whether you have kids that go to school here or not. That's a source of pride for this town. Oh, the parade. Okay. And I'll get there next year, I promise. I just need to, to, there's always gonna be, no matter how much it costs, there are gonna be people that don't wanna pay it. I get it, I understand it. The sacrifice that we have to make is a result of history, but to say that if we send our kids to another school, that that amount is the same as what we're gonna pay for the next 20 years, someone mentioned it early, mentioned it earlier. 20 years from now, we're still gonna have kids that need to go to school, and we won't have a school. That option will be off the table. And guess what? We'll still be paying for our kids to go somewhere else. The mil rate is never gonna go down. Our taxes are always going to grow, go up. That's just the nature of business. And this is what we're doing, we're running a business. We need to invest in our business. If you owned a business and you didn't invest in your business, you wouldn't be surprised that you didn't have any new customers. We need to invest in our business, we will continue to get customers, we'll continue to support our longstanding customers. And if we don't work together to support our longstanding customers, then shame on us. But we need to get together and support a project, and then we need to hold each other accountable to make good decisions so this project can work. But if we're gonna keep sabotaging it from all angles, then don't be surprised that it gets voted down, and don't be surprised that our kids and our families start moving out. Think about what makes sense, think about the commitment that we need to make, and support
And at this point, I'd like to ask for, entertain a motion to adjourn, and the resolution presented under item one of the notice of this meeting be submitted to referendum vote in accordance with the notice of the meeting. Could I have a motion and a second to adjourn? And a second?
Dave Zellin.
Dave Zellin? And, and who gave, Cheryl, who got, who made the first motion? Nick? Oh, sorry, Nick. Nick. Okay. And all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And this, this meeting is adjourned to referendum vote on Monday, May 16th, correct?
Yes.
Monday, May 16th, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the Newtown Hall, 40 Main Street in North Stonington, on the resolate, resolution presented under item one of the moderate, of the notice. Thank you very much, it's been a great group. Thank you very much.
Thank you for moderating.